Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, April 21st. I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Schultz.
Here.
Lada.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Paul Baker.
Here.
Danfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for those watching online, apologize for the delay. Our committee meeting ran a little bit over, so we were just getting started with this. So if everyone could now, please, and if able, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, everyone. Look for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for April 7th.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, a quick reminder, as somebody else at the last meeting mentioned it, just for all of us up here to just speak as closely into the mic as we can. I know for a few people it was hard to hear last time, so just a continuous reminder for us. We will now move to public forum. Our speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak tonight? And specifically on topics not on the agenda and another item. If it's on the agenda for later item, we'll wait for that point for public comment, so let's go ahead. Just name an address, please.
Dennis Pruckler, Cedar Falls.
Ms. Pruckler, can I see it quick before you hand it out?
Would you like to preview anything we ever send out?
Usually just out of practice, I try to make sure to look at it before we hand it out.
Okay, we'll try and do that. Think we had tried the last time, but we're told otherwise. Oh, well.
Thank you, Ms. Pruckler.
I didn't bring my little natural timepiece this week, so I'm going to count on you when you want me to be quiet, I will. Last time I talked about natural consequences, they sometimes get called, I can't remember the word everybody uses for that, to avoid saying "natural consequences." I think it's unintentional, that's the word. Last time I talked about that. I'm going to continue with that this week. And in particular, I had hoped to, what I'm handing out is just a random assortment of materials I had collected that I had hoped to present to the Parks Commission with their 10-year planning thing. But I'm just going to present them here and to the publics. Almost everybody in the room's getting something different because this was just a random dump pile of materials I had accumulated. So you may not all have the same stuff. The only thing you do have is this. It's a picture of Manch, aerial photo of Manchester, Iowa. Right in the center here, it's hard to do on the thing, but you could see that it filled in above the Whitewater Park. The river is almost entirely full of mud now. That's natural, but you build a solid dam across the river without floodgates to flush the mud out, it builds up. My concern is that we may, it took them 10 years, but they now have a nice mud flat. My concern is that we may very well see the same thing here if we remove the floodgates. One of their main functions is to flush the silt out of the bottom of the channel upstream. Without that, it will fill up like Manchester. That said, looks like we're on the course for doing Phase Two on the Whitewater Park. As far as I know, it's still on the agenda consideration in the 10-year plan, so I just want to share a little piece of, I'm personally not wild about mud flats, but if they proceed as the plan is written up and drafted, it's pretty likely, I mean, that's what happens with fixed solid dams with no floodgate. If we build it, we will probably spend even more than we did for the lower one. We spent a few million, maybe a little more than we were told initially. I expect the other one may cost more. There's a little bit more involved in, you know, I don't know how many millions, I'll guess 10 conservatively, but could be double or triple for all I know. Lot of money to build a mud flat. And, you know, those who like, people who like mud flats, I'm going to go into that subject tonight because someone in here may have a little slide or sheet about the Mud Olympics, International Mud Olympics in Germany near Hamburg. Hamburg, it's an annual event, thousands of people attend. It's a big tourist attraction. There's all kinds of mud events that they do. Volleyball, mud yoga, mud races, mud football, it's just, if you can think of it, they play it in the mud. You know, it's a big event. We could have, we could host the North American Mud Olympics. I could find no record of them here. There are big mud events. Somebody has a slide of the mud volleyball event they had in Evansdale a few years ago. There's all kinds of mud events. We could host those. One thing with, if they do the project as planned, it will raise the water levels and about 30% of the summer, we will have water in Island Park over it. By calculations, you can't do otherwise if you take the floodgates out, it will happen. So we could actually host them in the park, and it could even become a Sturgis Falls event. If anybody would like to add that to Sturgis Falls, we might even be able to do it this year if we just close the floodgates and padlock them. 30% chance we'll have, we could have mud events in Sturgis Falls this, this year. I don't know. I'll end here if anybody has any questions or would like to encourage me to go further.
Thank you, Mr. Pruckler.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment tonight, please? Just name an address, please.
Rosemary Beach, Western Home. And don't tell me mud, I have to think we have enough rain off in at Sturgis Falls lately that we don't need to worry about it, do we? This doesn't account for my five minutes, I'm just telling you there. But it's going well for, they've let me come back on the Sturgis Falls Committee as an advisor or something else, I don't know, whatever. But eventually, they are doing well, so it's going to happen, and I appreciate that. 50 years ago, it was just three people, and we had a ball. Anyway, that is not what I came to talk about. The newspaper article had Cedar Falls seeks feedback on vision statement. And I had a couple of things to say about that, if I may. The City Hall in that article said they had over 400 responses. Now, the trouble with that is it doesn't tell you if it's children under five or old people under 90. So you don't have a feel if you're just reading this. And the reason I'm just reading that is I don't have a computer, so I can't send anything in, number one. I cannot do that. And I don't think I'm the only one in Cedar Falls who would appreciate saying mail in or get it, we'll send you a thing or something, if you really want to do it. But anyway, so you have 400 responses. Now, my thinking is, is there 45,000 people in Cedar Falls? I don't know anymore. That's okay. So, what's that percentage? I can't do that. So, is that good or bad? But you seem to be proud you have that many people. I'll agree with your charting tomorrow and your five areas. You had recreational, that was well-maintained infrastructure. I call restrooms infrastructure. It is infrastructure. If you think you're going to get rid of me, I don't, I don't know what, how that's going to happen, but I think we need restrooms for people who need restrooms. I just visited your two out there, they were completely empty. Nobody knows they're there. They are the best rest, if you just take one out and just take it someplace and build around it and put books in there, I don't know. Then we are going to do this for current and future demands on our growing community. Our growing community is old. We need help. I can tell you that. It's not fun. I thought that at the end of my life, I was going to have a lot more fun. Handicapped restrooms are necessity. I'm not just asking for present. They're a necessity in this city. We deserve to give that to people. You're providing for healthy and active lifestyle for people of all ages. Well, Bob was 97, I'm 90, you're not providing for me, I don't think. And I didn't think you provided for him. Since I had no computer, I could not send the message into you. I could have written, I've written the City Hall every once in a while, but I've never heard back, so I don't know what, I think they go in, I don't know where they go. Anyway, I wish you would remember that you have a city full of old people, and you're getting older, and you will realize that sooner than you want to. And I think we need to take a little bit better, that city, to think about them. And I didn't see anything really relating to that. You have wonderful places for us people to live, we're happy to live there. I'm still looking for a place for these restrooms. One restroom, I only want one. You can keep one, but give me the other one. If you look at Community Main Street, they have a garage, they, I think they have storage underneath. I don't know how much more land they have, but it seems to me that restroom in there is nine by 12 approximately, from me measuring it. And I think they have enough room to put one next to. I mean, where would you go? It's a good place to go. And you also would have people walking into that place. So I'm suggesting maybe that, and it was suggested to me the other day. The building that you reconstruction, reconstructed that was going to be torn down, that's put back together. What if something you don't have already going there, a restroom in the bottom of that building and somebody up above? And I do not believe that people are going to come in and trash this restroom. When I last talked a year ago, there was a video and was shown with terrible things happened in that restroom. I mean, I don't think we're that kind of people. I'm not worried about what it's going to do, but I'm worried about not having it. So I'd come to you again and say, spend $1.98 on a new restroom for us since we needed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beach. And you're right on close account on your residents. I believe we're about 41,42,401% of that. So which actually, from looking at other places, that's fairly good turnout, but it's one of those things we would always love, always love, a lot more feedback than that. So appreciate, and I will give you a call, so if there is anybody else who would like to give feedback, that we can go get some paper copies from. Thank you, Rosemary. Is there anyone else for a public comment tonight? Just name an address, please.
Ray Frederickson, 126 Devlin Circle. I understand, I watched the committee and the whole meeting, I understand when we have increases, you know, we have to have things, the garbage pickup, sewer, everything. One thing I really don't understand, where I've heard no pushback from anybody on my property taxes being siphoned away from my public school system to give to private and parochial schools. I don't think anybody here can tell me that they have the right to take one penny from me to give to a church or to a private school. I don't know why there's no pushback, nobody talks about it. They're not representatives in the state, they're politicians, and they got their ears to who's betting it. You people don't have the right to raise my taxes one penny if it goes to any of those institutions. We're stealing from our public schools, from our kids, and pretty soon it'll be, oh, we got to drop football. Then we'll hear somebody talk. We'll hear all of you people getting talked to when you start taking away things from the public school, which they're going to have to do. The parochial schools, they don't provide everything, they don't have to do special ed, they don't, it's not apples to apples. So I want to, I'd like to see what percentage of my tax dollars that go to the schools, because I'll tell you, I probably could have either leave, or else I'm going to say, I'm going to pay any part of that property tax that goes to that. You don't have the right to tax me to give to a church or a private school. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify quickly, that none of our local property taxes go toward those programs.
They don't go to the schools?
So it does go toward the public schools. All of the money for the voucher program is through state funding, through income taxes, through, it's not through the local property taxes.
And that, no money's been siphoned away from our city schools.
Well, I'm just saying, our local property taxes don't pay toward any of the state-funded programs like the school voucher system, so we don't really have any input. That's be the state legislators, congressmen at the state, excuse me, the House and Senate at the state level make those decisions.
But don't you, as a, as a city, as a city, say, hey, we're not going for this? I haven't heard anybody say anything about it. Oh, it got passed by the Senate and the House, and boy, that governor, she signed in a hurry.
I can certainly talk, I know-
Doesn't anybody here care about that?
I do know a lot of these council members here are very passionate about that, and are very outspoken. As an individual, as a city, it's our job to focus on our local resources and what we're responsible for running. So I know the individuals here, several have views on different sides of that, and they are very vocal about it. And I would say, though, it's as an organization, as an entity, we as the city don't really have official say in that, but I do know a lot of the individuals up here advocate pretty passionately on both sides and also a lot of issues.
I don't mind paying taxes, I mean, my kids, I'm here only in this town because of my grandkids.
Yep.
You know, and I don't mind paying taxes for their schools. I don't want to pay for any other that's not public. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? Just name an address, please.
Isaac Mata, Waterloo. About a year ago, I had a similar farewell as a management grade of intern, but seeing as my term has ended as City of Cedar Falls as well, I am here to say thank you to both the council and staff. I'm sorry I'm a bit hoarse today, but yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
And I know to everyone, it probably seems like Noah just got on the group, which he did.
Isaac.
Isaac.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. See, look what I did, Isaac.
It actually does seem like Noah just got on.
But Isaac, thank you for all the time this last couple of months, and especially for filling in as a temporary role, knowing it was the last semester of your time here, and really appreciate you making and working with the student council government to make sure we've got that relationship going forward to help get the next one selected, so appreciate.
So we give a round of applause here.
And thank you for your time as an intern, because I know nothing but glowing reviews, feedback from staff that all loved working with you, so appreciate it, and good luck to everything you do going forward.
You too.
Thanks, Isaac. I mean, since we're on that topic, if I may, of state government, I actually ran into Mr. Hackbrough down in Des Moines last week, and he was still speaking very highly of Isaac Mata and his work here. But also further clarification of the three funding mechanisms, I know Mr. Frederickson had to step out, but of the three funding mechanisms that do fund the schools-
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to-
I was just going to read back what you said. None of our local departments have moved towards that program at all. The three funding mechanisms have, that we have control over at the city stay here with our public schools.
Thank you for that. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will close public forum and go to staff updates. I believe we have an update from Library Director Kelly Stern.
Thank you and good evening. I sent Denny a couple of photos. Now that the weather's getting great, this is perfect timing. The library used some of our foundation funds to install a music garden on the State Street side of the library. So it adds a little bit of visual interest to State Street, but it also has benefits for the children and families who will play with them. So all of these are musical instruments, percussion instruments. They are unifiers through shared musical experience, because you may have multiple families playing at the same time. It's therapeutic because it improves cognitive function, social and motor skills, and it's beneficial to mental health because of music. And it's fun and invites creative play. So come on over to the library when you get a chance and take a look at the music garden and play a little song.
And I believe this was funded by the Friends?
Cedar Falls Community Foundation.
Community Foundation, so thank you to the Community Foundation for funding that, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. And then Rosemary gave my plug for me, but one more plug for, we do have the initial draft of some of the big goal, key goal areas from our initial survey feedback focus groups for the strategic plan. So if you go to cedarfalls.com/strategicplan, we are taking feedback on those high-level goal areas. Next steps, we'll take that feedback, meet again as the full council with some of staff leadership, and further flesh some of those out as we then work with staff to put some of those operational things in there of commitments for next three to five years, so. Thank you, everyone, and we will now move to-
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was just going to see if I could get a staff update. There was a median damage, I think actually Councilman Gill pointed it out, but I wouldn't mind if Director Burdy could kind of give a public service announcement as to what happens in those instances when something gets damaged in town.
All right, I assume you're talking about out in front of the library in the 500 block of Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, early Sunday morning or late Saturday night, there was a vehicle that lost control, struck some of the items in the curb. Somebody was injured and ultimately arrested for driving while intoxicated. But I know there's damage out there to a flower pot and some lights and things, and those things take weeks and months to repair, not days. So the city knows about it, and there's insurance involved, so.
Cool, thanks for hunting that down. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Director. All right, we'll move on to Special Order Business, item number two, Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Budget for the City of Cedar Falls. Do we have a motion to receive and file proof of publication, no hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, and I believe Director Rodenbeck had just a few comments before we jump into it.
Um, as everyone knows, the budget can be a long process. The budget was first presented to council on February 17th with a proposed rate of $12.50. At the March 3 committee meeting, the council approved $687,000 worth of cuts to lower the property tax rate to $12.20. The budget before you tonight is the budget presented at the special council meeting held on April 7th with that $12.20 rate. The public had an opportunity to speak at all those previous meetings and has that opportunity again tonight as part of this public hearing. The budget was published and presented to the taxpayers in the letter at the $12.50 rate. However, again, as I mentioned, what's before you tonight is at the $12.20. The impact of that $12.20 for residential is about 5.2%, or on a $100,000 home, that's about $29 a year. And for commercial, it's about a 3.69% increase. After approval tonight, the budget will be filed with the county and the state of Iowa by the April 30th deadline, and the full budget document will be updated and available on the city's website.
Thank you, Director. I did, for written communications, I had one phone call, just sharing that they did not approve with any of the increases, wanting to see us buy it down some further, just wanted to, I didn't have a chance to call them back today, but I just wanted to share that. Did want to share as well, so for tonight, this is the final public hearing, so with this motion and moving forward from tonight, we'll be publishing and sending all the information to the state for the final levy rate, and so looking for any final conversation, discussion with council, and moving ahead with the final amount with the presentation to the state. So with that, then, we will move to public comments unless there's any clarifying questions this time for staff. Go move ahead to public comment, then, if there's anyone that would like to speak on this tonight from the public for up to five minutes. Give a second, just in case there's someone in the hallway as well. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion, resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year 26 budget for the City of Cedar Falls.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion seconded and open to council discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. As I had said extensively at the previous council meeting, I have concerns that we are as a percentage, in a sense, violating our own policy that we negotiated at the goal setting, where we set ourselves to limit the rate of inflation, tax increases to the rate of inflation on our residential properties. And I did a little research on the state rollback calculations and the state code that calculates the rollback. It's state code 441.21 that describes the process of doing the rollback, and it's set that the cap on the increased inflation that's reflected in our ultimate rollback and the taxes that you pay would be limited to 3% inflation rate. So in the rollback, we already have the rate of inflation incorporated into the budget process. We then, according to the inter-office memo, are saying that we're increasing an additional 5.29% that's reflected by doing $12.20. I've proposed several times now to move monies from extra funds that we've established through Mr. Rodenbeck, from buckets, we'll just call it buckets of money, but we could buy this down by a few items that I proposed here. But we could buy this down by a few items that I proposed here in my letter. If I can grab it here. So we can discuss those. Conference rooms table replacement, $6,500. Community-wide strategic plan, $21,250. Visioning and zoning plan for College Hill, $52,000. Energy efficiencies, $30,000, and a national community survey for $25,000. It totals $134,750. A very small component of our overall budget, using monies from capital projects, could be allocated to this, which would lower our millage rate by a small amount, and it would be appreciated by the citizens to do so. So I'd entertain a discussion on that. And I should reiterate, there's no cuts in service by doing so.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor, can I just clarify one point?
Yep.
I just want to make sure that the 5.29 that everybody understands, that includes the change in the rollback as well. So the rate went up, like 2.8%, the rollback went up, you know, the 2.6 or, so that does include that change in the rollback. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I did have that in mind, too, just because it's the total increase. So that includes the inflationary amount. So the 5.29 includes for all the total increase in the budget. Any additional dollar collected from property taxes is built in that. So it's not on top of inflation, it's built into that.
I understand. So inflation's 3%. We're going beyond what we voted ourselves to basically tell staff to come forward with a financial plan that limited tax increases to no more than the rate of inflation. We're over the rate of inflation. So we're violating our own policy. So that's a concern. Citizens had emailed me and called me, thanking me to point that out. And I think we can trim some more off of this 1220. It's extra money. So let's reallocate it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I thought when the 1220 was proposed, it was a good budget. It was well thought out. Cuts were made to what the max levy amount we talked about at the beginning. Everything we do is a balance. It's a balanced budget. If we take from one, in Mr. Cruz's words, bucket, and move it to another, then you are necessarily cutting whatever was, it was earmarked for before. I think we're all in agreement that the things that are funded in the budget at the 1220 rate are necessary. They keep the city moving forward. They recognize the growth of the city and the desire to continually grow, and it evidences the costs that every household in Cedar Falls has seen over these past couple of years in particular, us kind of keeping up with the inflationary pressures on wages and that sort of thing. And so I think it's sensible. You know, in the same token, we had a discussion about putting a dollar per month on a household for a sewer fee. So I'm not entirely sure where that concern is on those little tick down on the millage rates. What I can say is that there are several policies in our financial document, which includes making sure we don't raid funds for these sorts of things, because they're earmarked for capital improvements and economic development down the road, so that we don't have to bond for them, which is more expensive. And those policies have served us well. And frankly, if you look over the last few years, to the extent that the rate of inflation is an important guide, we're within that. And I think we talked about that before. So, Mr. Mayor, I would be in favor of adopting the 1220 rate.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I could respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
Secretary, I'll see if anyone else wants to jump in first. Okay, go for it.
So to Counselor Hawbaker's remark that we're moving from one bucket to another, I'm talking about surplus money that's not earmarked for anything, so it would not affect current budgeted items or future budgeted items. There's always a surplus slush fund, whatever you want to call it, that accumulates, and citizens would be grateful to trim however small it might be to lower the 1220 rate. Won't affect anything. It'll help people to the point of a dollar a household for a sanitary sewer project. That would be along the lines of an enterprise fund, which has a very specific purpose. We're not taking surplus funds. After a surplus funds, we could allocate it towards the sewer. It's apples and oranges there. I don't compare the two to be the same.
I did follow up from previous meetings, just because I think sometimes we refer to some of our funds as slush funds, which they are not. But the capital projects, because that was a discussion in the last meeting, worked with Director Rodenbeck, so it shows there we've got 30 million in the account, 31, 32, can't remember the exact amount. But then also in the TIF liabilities, which is where that gets paid out of, we've got 30 million. So Director Rodenbeck got me the numbers. There's about $7 million in that account that are essentially kind of unencumbered dollars that we have available for capital projects. If you look in the CIP, there is about four and a half million listed there of capital projects. There's an additional, I believe, Jen, you can always correct my numbers, which you always should if I speak wrongly. It comes out to about 6.75 million total between what's in the CIP, but we also still have some unfunded obligations for the high school pool. As an example, also, the River Project still has some private fundraising to do. About 130-ish of that's been collected. About 500,000 was budgeted. And if that doesn't come through, that's some of the fund we'll take from capital projects to make up that difference. So there's about 250,000 in there right now that's not really budgeted toward anything, but we always know we've got something coming up. And so that's kind of how the city capital projects has been used, is we always kind of budget for what we expect to have in there. Obviously, five years out, the CIP changes, never quite know, but we at least try to always budget for about what we're going to have available with, excuse me, knowing there's always some projects that maybe come in underfunded, overfunded, and having the ability to try and accommodate for that. Also, to his point, there is some funding there, but also a lot of it's allocated. But essentially, it's always a discussion of, is it money we want to use today, or do we have it allocated and want to use it toward something else, another point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I personally like to think that we don't take our accounts down to the zero. And that way, as you've said, and I guess maybe I'm saying something a little differently. If something, if there's opportunities that come up, that money is there. I mean, I don't think it's smart to take those accounts, the money that you're talking about. I'm not for borrowing from that or to pay it on the millage rate. The proposal that Councilman Cruz sent over via the email, I think we said was $134,750 is what that, those proposals were. So on a $100,000 house, that's $2.84, $8.52 on a $300,000 house. I understand what, you know, money is important for all of our budgets, but I want to make sure, you know, yes, I don't doubt that there are folks reaching out to you that are saying they want their rate lower. But I also want to make sure that we realize, I wholeheartedly, because I'm one of those people, believe there are a whole host of people that are perfectly fine with this budget and want us to stick to the policy that has put our city in a, I know we say it all the time, but I'm going to say it again, enviable spot, especially when we don't know what's coming down. The state hasn't been in favor. It kind of seems like if there's a way they can keep us from collecting funds, they're sure hell-bent on doing that. So I am comfortable with the compromise that we had and with the 1220, right, is what we're at, right, Jen? Yes. So that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Yep.
So I will add to what I've said before. I do appreciate Darrell's energies that he puts forward on this in each of the years I've been on council. I would say for the public to know that when we talk about goal setting, if we went around to these seven up here, and then the mayor, our tax rate, if we got everything that we were hoping to get, it'd be about 22 something, right? So we spent literally dozens of hours hammering this down. So the things that Darrell's bringing up here, and if you don't hear us debating it a lot, is we heard it for hours, and we debated about it for hours, and we negotiated with it for hours. And I'm kind of in the point of going, if you're, if you want to keep with this boat showing, fine, but I'm at the point, we dug in deep for 1220, and that's where I am. I'm at 1220.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion, thoughts, counsel? All right, seeing none, we've got a motion second on the floor and requires a roll call
My machine didn't want to wake up, so.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number three, public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 19, Article 8, Major Thoroughfare Plan of the Code of Ordinances. Do we have a motion to receive and file approval for publication of notice of hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. A little bit of quick background on this. So you'll notice we have this item. We do also have later in the agenda, in the ordinances, a section for, let me pull it up here so I speak correctly, amending the chapter 20 for subdivisions. So these are kind of hand-in-hand items. However, just because of the setup of what's required to be in a public hearing and what's done in separate ordinance, they're two separate items. So this item here in the public hearing is really for the major thoroughfare plan, approving the new map, and then anything with the Article 8. Within that, the subdivision ordinances that impacted a lot of the maximum block length, those things will be in a separate item later on. But they kind of interact, so guessing we'll have some conversation, but we'll have that as a separate approval later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
Yes, we have communication that was provided in the council materials, and then we had one that was placed on the dais for council members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then for staff comments, we've got Karen Howard. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Good evening. We talked about this at the committee the whole meeting several weeks ago, but there are two goals to this project. As the mayor said, there's two parts to it. Updates to the major thoroughfare plan, which is in chapter 19. That includes some updates to the major thoroughfare map, which will come later, and updates to definitions and regulations in that section of the code, and then the updates to the subdivision code, which is later on the agenda. Just a little project overview. We highlighted some of the problems and potential solutions in a staff presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission back in August of last year. Our major thoroughfare map is outdated and no longer useful. The last time it was updated was the 1980s. So I think the city's changed a lot since that time. So we also have a lack of objective standards to give any guidance to ensure a well-connected and efficient street pattern, and a lot of inconsistencies in the definitions between those two sections of the code. We did some outreach to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, and Home Builders Association, and the CFEDC about the project. We had a project webpage started and several currents articles highlighting the project. And then we proposed amendments officially to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, who recommended approval. So just a little overview on the benefits of updating our major thoroughfare plan and the map. The map is identified, identifies the major thoroughfares, which includes arterial streets and the collector streets in the community, and future extensions to provide efficient traffic circulation throughout the community. It's the guiding document for our capital improvements planning and for new subdivisions. It's the basis for requests, often, for federal and state infrastructure grants. If we have something in place that puts us in good stead with the grant, for grants. And it also helps to reduce debates about the location and type of the major roadways as the city expands, and ensures consistency in our development review. So some basics about the updates that are in the ordinance that you had in your packet. We updated the definitions. We updated the standards for access to arterial streets. We've updated the map showing existing and future planned collector and arterial streets. The updated map shows approximately a quarter-mile spacing for collector streets, with exceptions for floodplain and stream crossings. It also includes updates on the map consistent, these map, maps are consistent with recommended intersection spacing according to the Federal Highway Administration and the Iowa statewide urban design and specifications. So we're consistent with those documents as well. Just to note that the major thoroughfare map itself will be updated by council resolution following the third reading of the ordinance. This will allow the map to be updated over time as the city grows or conditions change. So with that, at their meeting on February 26, by a vote of seven to one, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of amendments to chapter 19, Article 8, the major thoroughfare plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Howard, any clarifying questions from council at this time?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Howard, for the brief review. Does this include, this update include increasing the right-of-way for new subdivisions? I understand that we want to go to, what, 65 or something like that?
So those changes are to the subdivision code, which is on the later item in the agenda, and I'll go, if the mayor's permission, I can go with an overview for that at that time.
Okay.
This is chapter of the code is really about the major thoroughfare map-
Right.
-and the collector and arterial streets on the map.
And they kind of go hand-in-hand? They are separate?
That's why I was trying to read through this, and I didn't see any reference to the right-of-way in this. So it's not in this one?
It's not in this ordinance, right.
You know, offhand, what, which one we're in? 30?
So the-
Oh, the other item? So it's the last one on the ordinance?
38 is the last, the subdivision code ordinance.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll move to public comments. So anyone from the public will have up to five minutes to speak on this item tonight. Just name the address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and, Mr. Mayor and council members. Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue, and also representing the Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. I'm not a chair or vice chair of the commission right now. I've served in those roles in the past, but both the chair and the vice chair are unavailable right now, so I'm going to pinch-hit for them tonight and speak briefly in support of adopting the major thoroughfare map and echoing the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission's endorsement of the map. The map is terrific. In the new areas that have proposed streets for either collector or arterial, it's all nicely gridded, which would have been nice if we had done that 50 years or so ago for the rest of the city, but we didn't. But for the areas that are currently developed, it doesn't change the streets that are out there. So there's not a big change in major thoroughfare for those existing streets and thoroughfares that we've been living with for these past X number of years. But it is a wise, I think, and a thoughtful way to approach the future. And I think that's what Cedar Falls is very good at, is a wise and thoughtful approach to the future. And so I would urge you to adopt this ordinance. We do have some opportunities to talk about some issues, as Councilman Cruz brought up, that are separate from this, but related to it. And it is kind of confusing for, it is confusing for the citizen to keep track of it, but I understand the difference between the two different ordinances and the way the agenda has to be prepared with a public hearing and so forth. But let me leave you with this. We support it, we being the commission, we support it. We urge you to adopt it, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to pass in the ordinance amending chapter 19, Article 8, Major Thoroughfare Plan of the Code of Ordinances upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I, my only hesitancy with this is the change where we're getting a little more constricted and making more roads required in shorter distances, for example, on section 19279. Street access for major thoroughfares used to- Street access for major thoroughfares used to be located not less than one-fourth mile intervals, and now it's saying it needs to be at, at least that. So before, there was some ambiguity where you could spread them out a little bit, now it's requiring streets every quarter-mile, which really does reduce the amount of developable land, so that's my only hesitancy with this portion of those developments, is that we're kind of dictating to our developers what they can build when we claim to have a housing shortage. Now we're saying you can't build houses, you have to build a street, which costs a boatload more money, and is concrete instead of greenway, et cetera. So I have some hesitancy, but I do appreciate the work that went into this from our commissioners, and I think I've heard from some development on both this and the latter topic, that's difficult not to co-mingle, but I think I have some trepidation about the shift, but I guess, I just wanted to make sure I understood what other rationale there is for moving forward with both of these, if that's the unintentional cost, as Mr. Preckler mentioned earlier.
Mr. Mayor, to that point...
Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
To that point, I think that's where we ended up kind of dead-ending ourselves and having access to some neighborhoods for emergency access, to move people, so I was kind of looking at this from a opposite side of now where you don't have to drive two miles down to get out of a neighborhood, or drive two miles to get an emergency vehicle to that area. And I think that's a better payoff to have that interval.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
A question of clarification. Was there any discussion about, you know, we do an incremental shift in some cases. This is moving from not less than one-fourth miles with no max that we won't allow, so to Councilman Schultz's points, if we have a two-mile street that's run on, I mean, there's a couple of neighborhoods where kids can't ride their bikes to their neighbor's house because they gotta go two miles. Was there discussion around a window in the middle between those two ditches of one-quarter-mile and two miles, maybe?
So, the arterial streets are about half-mile to a mile apart, so we have tried to do the collector streets, which collect all the traffic from the local streets and funnel it out to the arterial streets. So, looking at what other cities do, what other, you know, what other, what good practice is, and some of the problems that we've had with, as Councilmember Schultz said, with our traffic circulation. These are the major, major streets in the city to carry that traffic between neighborhoods. So that's a good benchmark, a quarter-mile. So there wasn't a lot of discussion about changing that. Now, you can do more spacing, obviously downtown we have more spacing, but out, the concern is not having enough collector streets to collect, to have good circulation between the neighborhoods. So that was the concern that we were trying to address and expand the map to, you know, future. Does that help?
Yeah, good.
I think it helps. My only concern there is the change in language, right? In some cases, we talk about going from "may" to "shall," and the previous language was located at "not less than," whereas now it's saying it must be spaced at one-fourth mile intervals, so I didn't see the ambiguity where there's subjectivity to spacing them further apart.
So, just to be clear, the major thoroughfare map is a generalized map, so it's not an exact alignment, so we're not gonna put the street through somebody's house, or that sort of thing, so it does have language in there to be able to adjust that spacing.
That case-by-case consideration?
Yeah, right, so that would be considered at the time of the subdivision.
Perfect.
This would just be for subdivisions. We say there's, collector street needs to be here, generally in this location.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Karen. Yep, go ahead.
Ms. Howard, I did find what I was concerned with in the language here, it's page 30. This update here is gonna increase the right-of-way width of local streets from 60 to 66 feet, so you're widening the street to the sidewalk area for utilities, is what is stated. I look at my subdivision, built in the 70s, and there's more than adequate space there, and concerns from developers have said that you're taking up the usable space, and to Councilman Gannfield's point, you're requiring more concrete, more water runoff, more cost to the control of water flow. That's one of the components right there I have a concern with.
So the right-of-way width does not include increasing the width of the actual street itself, it's just the right-of-way width.
I understand, it's a 31-foot street.
Right, 31-foot street, so I think, and the city engineers here too can comment on this, we got a lot of input on, we have a lot of things that have to fit into the right-of-way, and the thought was to increase it to 66 feet, because we've had problems with snow storage, with enough for utilities, with enough, you know, enough room for the street trees, sidewalks. If we constrain that right-of-way too much, then there's not enough room for all those things, so that's the reason for that marginal increase.
Really quick point of order, I think that's on Chapter 20. Yeah, so we'll...
Well, it's in item three, and we're talking about item three, every not.
It's...
It's referring specifically to Chapter 20, so we just kind of have that, because they're kind of hand-in-hand together in the packet for ease of reviewing. I'm sorry, talking to my mic. But I'm, if counsel feels more comfortable being able to talk about it same time we can, but otherwise, we can make sure and circle back to the Chapter 21.
Okay, I apologize for missing that, but...
You're right, it's in that subject.
Mm-hmm.
It's doubled in two parts, and because of the public hearing, let's keep it to Chapter 19 for this portion.
And it's under the proposed changes to the subdivision code, which is later, so...
So we'll bring that up again.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any other questions, discussion on the Chapter 19 portion of this? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now move to old business, item number four, pass ordinance number 3098, vacating a portion of Campus Street right-of-way south of West 23rd Street upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number five, pass ordinance number 3099, amending Chapter 2, administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to police division, acting chief in absence of the police chief, and fire division, acting chief in absence of the fire chief, upon its third and final consideration. Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number six, pass ordinance number 3100, amending Chapter 13, licenses and business regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to sales prohibited on public property, exemptions, application for license, and insurance relative to mobile merchants upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? And any from the public? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm disappointed this is the last time I'll get to read this one. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3101, amending Chapter 17, parks and recreation of the Code of Ordinances relative to definitions, penalty for violation of article, no tree or shrub planting, trimming, or other similar work in public places, tree trimmers license, exemptions from license and permit requirements, temporary cutoff of electricity for purpose of pruning or removal, fastening signs, wire, et cetera, deposit or storage of materials, impeding passage of water and air to roots, protecting during building operations, tree and shrub damage, trees and shrubs overhanging street or sidewalk, diseased or infected trees declared nuisance, maintenance of infected trees prohibited, failure to destroy infected trees or wood, destruction by city, noxious weeds prohibited, exceptions, and failure to destroy noxious weeds, right to hearing, destruction by city upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna vote this now, so you have to read it again.
You have to get four or three others to agree with it.
You missed a word, I think, in there when you read it.
I worry that I might have skipped a line, but...
Do it again.
All right, any discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3102, amending Chapter 19, streets and sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances relative to definitions, plantings by property owners or parties in possession, duty to maintain street-side area assessment, damage by city to plantings or obstructions in the street-side area, warnings and barriers, storage of building materials, certain commercial use of public sidewalks, duty of abutting property owner to repair defective sidewalk, and standards for numbers upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? And any from the public? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3103, amending Chapter 19, streets and sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances relative to use of public sidewalks for sidewalk cafes, operation of sidewalk cafes, application for sidewalk cafe permit, and insurance requirements upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 10, pass ordinance number 3104, amending Chapter 19, streets and sidewalks of the Code of Ordinances relative to contractors bond, insurance bond, insurance and contractors bond, insurance, upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from counsel? And any from the public? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 11, pass ordinance number 3105, amending Chapter 23, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to definitions, electric, personal-assisted mobility devices, control of vehicle, reduced speed, use of sidewalks, pedestrian use of a roadway, solicitation of rides, riding on sidewalk prohibited in specified locations, traffic control signal legend, pedestrian conveyances and bicycles prohibited from use on certain city property, and pedestrian conveyances and bicycles must yield to pedestrians afoot, priority upon its third and final consideration. Quickly, before we move on this one, I know staff was able to send out an update, where there was some conversation on this at the previous meeting about, does it allow for bicyclists to be able to act as if they can just go through a red light? We were able to clarify, this is only relating to bicyclists when they're in the sidewalk. If a bicyclist is in the roadway, they're still treated as a moving vehicle, it must follow all roads laws as they would. This is only relating to, let's say, a family is on their bikes on the sidewalk, and clarifying when they're able to cross the road using the sidewalk. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from counsel?
I would say that Mr. Rogers's explanation, and to elaborate on what you were saying, you have a family, and it's a mother and a father, and young kids on small bikes, you typically will see on the sidewalk, not someone that is an adult on a bike that is not allowed, but more in that situation, so thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from counsel? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
Good evening again, Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue. Regarding the Chapter 11 amendments on traffic control legend, it describes vehicle behavior for a number of different light configurations. We have a steady circular red, that means stop, a steady circular yellow or yellow arrow, a steady circular green or green arrow, flashing circular red, that means stop and then proceed, a flashing yellow or flashing yellow arrow, and that just means continue through with caution. And then there are some pedestrian ones in there also, don't walk, flashing, hand sign, and so forth. It's the vehicle one that I'm concerned about, or want to question about, rather than the pedestrian one. Now, in the context of the above description of lights and what drivers are supposed to do, the city of Cedar Falls has a few rectangular, rapid-flashing beacons. There's one on Main Street, there are a couple on University, there's one on Viking, there are, I don't know, half a dozen or 10 around town. They are not described anywhere in this list, in my interpretation of it. These are pedestrian crossings, not at an intersection, they're in the middle of a block, and the pedestrian pushes the button, and a couple of flashing lights happen way off on the curb, and they're not yellow, I'd say they're more white than yellow, and so I don't know what a white light is, a driver is supposed to do, and I think, based on my experience with these devices, drivers don't know what they're supposed to do either. So I wonder if maybe that should be, if we're gonna have these devices, if it should be defined how drivers are supposed to respond to them, because even if you assume that they're yellow, I don't think they're yellow, they're not amber, for sure, and all the ordinance says that drivers are supposed to do, if it's a yellow flashing, is to proceed with caution. These are crosswalks where pedestrians and bicyclists pushing their bicycle are crossing the street, in the middle of, in some cases, 35, or maybe even larger or higher speed limits, with four lanes of traffic, like on Viking Road, there are two lanes each way. These things don't work. Drivers don't know what to do with them, and so I think we need to start by getting the ordinance clarified as to how drivers are supposed to respond to them, and then after we have it laid out, then start doing some education so that drivers know what they're supposed to do. Because I actually had a person ask me the other day what they're supposed to do when they see one of those, if there's no pedestrian, if the light's flashing, they see it's flashing, even though it's way off in the periphery, and there's no pedestrian in the crosswalk because they've already finished their cross. Do they have to stop? Well, my reaction is, yellow doesn't mean you ever have to stop, you just have to proceed with caution, if you assume it's yellow. If you assume it's white, which I think, according to my vision, it's more white than yellow, I don't think, well, I have to do anything, and that's dangerous. I think those things are more dangerous than they are an aid for our pedestrians, so thank you. If anybody can answer that question, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. White. Other Director Shragi, I don't know if that falls under, as you know, is this the ordinance, or is this the code area where that would be laid out?
No.
Or do we have another?
I agree, this ordinance does not address that situation, Roger, it does not. The, this is my interpretation, without looking at the pedestrian ordinances separately, is vehicles must yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk. These flashing yellow lights, white lights, whatever they are, are a signal, a warning to motorists, there's a crosswalk here, and so you need to yield to a pedestrian who may be in it.
And do we have that explicitly laid out somewhere for people to be able to review?
Yeah, the yield to pedestrians in crosswalk is in the Code of Ordinances and in the state code, yes. Now, tying that together in an ordinance, I don't think we do that anywhere, but Craig, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I would just add one thing, you know, we've had one, you know, on the 6,200-block University, if you picture that stretch between Subway and John Deere Motors, and that's probably been there for five years. If you've ever been there when Pete Junior High is starting school at 8:00 AM and getting out at 3:00, they do work, and we've had very few problems over four or five years, and I say that as a parent who put five kids through Pete Junior High, so, you know, they're drawing attention to the crosswalk, vehicles should yield to people in the crosswalk, but likewise, you shouldn't step out in the roadway until you know the car's gonna stop for you too. So, we've had them around town, and I would say that one on University Avenue, we've had very few problems, and they've been there, I'm sure we're at the four, five, six-year mark now, so, and there's others around town.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just pile on there, Section 23, 594 does address that flashing, doesn't address the flashing beacon, but it does address driver's duty for those using crosswalks marked or unmarked. So these lights are not traffic control lights, they are just heads-up lights, just like the flashing yellow at a pedestrian crosswalk on 12 in Clay. It's just to say, hey, pay attention, but the law does state at the state level, as well as our ordinance, that you must yield to pedestrians using the crosswalk.
Okay.
The flashing yellow at Clay is defined in this ordinance?
Correct.
It is correct, it's covered.
Yeah, this...
Are our labels are not?
Correct, they are not referenced, but the duty to stop for pedestrians in a crosswalk is covered explicitly by Section 23, 594. We could... is covered explicitly by section twenty-three, five ninety-four. We could probably clarify and add on those rapid flashing beacons.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I see it as, you know, as Mr. Rogers said, it's, here, this is a crosswalk, you know, it's identifying, so you have a heads up, especially on University, which is kind of busy signage, that sort of thing, where a crosswalk doesn't stand out. Kind of no different, you've seen the stop signs that sometimes will have that red illumination lights around it. It's still a stop sign, but it's just easier to see because they're illuminated, so. But if it's creating confusion, maybe there's some way we can help educate the public on that.
Thank you, Counselor. And I would say it might be a good conversation we can have with the Bike and Ped Committee, is some just PSA work we can do around some of that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. White. Yep, go ahead.
I do want to say that I believe, I'm not arguing, you know, with, with what Mr. White is saying, but I believe there was some education in this Quarter's Currents magazine, because I remember just reading about that. So there is a little education out there. I was thinking as I read that education in Currents magazine that I totally understand what Mr. White is saying, and I remember when they first, when we first opened up University Avenue, and that was, I believe, at least the first one I remember. And, you know, I will say as a driver, I was not a heads up with that, but I was just thinking the other day when I was reading the Currents that with time, and it could be better, but I feel like at least myself and the drivers at my house, I think we are getting better at recognizing those lights. But I hear what's being said.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, so for the sake of keeping us moving tonight, any other, I mean, since they discussed it, do you want to jump in?
I was just going to say, as a person who crosses at lots of these on Main Street and on twelfth, I would say less than half of the time do the cars actually yield to you. You just really have to stand there for a pretty long time and wait until there's a gap in the traffic and then hope no one comes flying over the hill, in particular by Gil's House.
Thank you, Counselor.
Just a quick one. Director Birdy, if the pedestrian went through, still flashing for a bit, is, is it, the car is free to go without slowing? I mean, it's a cautionary sort of thing.
You would just have to yield. So if, you've checked and nobody's crossing, you know, you should slow and proceed through. But yeah, you don't have to come to a stop.
If there is a pedestrian to the point that's been made, then they could get a ticket?
Yes. Well, it can go two ways. You can, there could be a citation for a vehicle not yielding to pedestrians. There's also, you know, pedestrians can get in trouble for not yielding to vehicles, so. So you just have to, just exactly like Hannah said, you need to use some judgment before you step into a roadway.
How do you determine if the pedestrian didn't yield to the car when he pushes the yellow light?
Well, we've had intersections on College Hill, for example, where intoxicated people in the middle of the night run across from one bar to the other, and they get hit by a car. And when you look back at the video, it's not the car's fault, you know, so. So really, it's looking at if, if you've got video evidence or something to show that, you know, if there's a vehicle going and they don't have time to stop, you also can't step out there either.
So it's akin to jaywalking? Or do we have an ordinance against jaywalking?
Twenty-three, five ninety-eight. Director Birdy, want to see that one?
We probably do, but you know, jaywalking is something you enforce in large cities where you want the people to cross at, only at intersections. In a town our size, you know, do we care if somebody walks across, get their mail in the middle of the block? No.
Well, the example of the hill.
Or downtown, where you're-
Well, it doesn't matter where you cross, you just shouldn't step out in front of a car on the hill, so.
All right, quick, just for tonight's meeting, anything else for this ordinance that? Good conversation, though. All right, and we're still in public comment, so anyone else for public comment this evening, please? All right, seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number twelve, pass ordinance number three one zero six, amending the boundaries for wards and precincts within the city of Cedar Falls to incorporate recently annexed territory upon its second consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please. Does weird glances count as conversation? Do weird glances count as conversation?
Yep.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number thirteen, pass ordinance number three one zero seven, designating the Cedar Falls Historic Core Urban Revitalization Plan of the City of Cedar Falls, Iowa upon its second consideration. So a motion to approve?
Second.
And seconded. And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
Did you break it?
Oh, there it was. You heard me clicking.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. We'll now move to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote and a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that an item be considered separately. Are there any requests from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none. Look for a motion to approve items fourteen through sixteen of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Move to resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote, or excuse me, a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone would like something considered separately. Is there any requests from council?
Mr. Mayor, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. Any others from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none. I'll look for a motion to approve items seventeen through thirty-seven of the resolution calendar excluding items twenty-three and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. We'll go to item number twenty, twenty-three. Tweed. Resolution approving and adopting amendments to CFD twenty-three fifty-four, personnel policy leaves of absence. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for discussion. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thanks. I was just concerned with the subject nature, the subjective nature of section two D eight A, where it's awarding three days of paid time off. So I guess I'd like to see if there's rationale for that or if we can amend that, so that there isn't a subjective nature to awarding an additional three days of paid time off based on closeness of an unnamed relationship.
Maria, does one, sorry?
Two D eight A.
Thank you.
Two D eight A.
So top of page one eighty in our packet.
Can you read it?
Talks about son-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, grandparents, grandchildren. In addition, we're adding in the death of any other person with whom the employee or employee spouse had a particularly close relationship may be considered for the same absence with pay if allowed by the city administrator. So you're determining the closeness of a person. I just think that's too subjective.
Bailey, would you mind?
Yeah. So this was to help us be a little more accommodating with our employees and help them in certain situations that may arise. So for example, something that we have seen is maybe a step-grandparent. So that's not specifically addressed in our policy, and it was kind of a gray area. Maybe that stepparent was very close to them. They've been in their lives since they were two or three years old. This would just allow us to accommodate that situation for some of our employees.
Okay. Thank you.
And I see that as the option. I'm just concerned that who, who's going to say no then? On what distance of closeness? Eventually, somebody's going to have a grievance against the city because we didn't allow their three days paid off when they thought they were close to their step-niece from twice removed.
And maybe they were.
And they may have been, yeah.
Right. And that would just be a discussion. We would consider all cases on a case-by-case basis and make that decision.
I think that's what I'm concerned against. I don't want a case-by-case analysis. I'd rather have them all spelled out if we're going to give bereavement pay.
That might be a list, an infinity and beyond list.
You have to make a cutoff at some point.
So I think we do have to have the due process if the city administrator makes that decision, and then it's no, then we'll go through the grievance process and be unfortunate, but I just think that list would be never-ending.
Yep. Thank you, Counselors.
I don't know that it's never-ending. Every HR division has a cutoff at some point. The proximity of the person could be argued, and so there could be some ambiguity, but that was my concern. I just wanted to bring that up, that I think-
Do you want to mistake, Counselor?
Counsel, do you want to propose language like-
I mean, my amendment would be to leave off that line of two A, two D eight A, leave off the addition to that section, allowing all the other changes. That would be my motion to amend.
Say that again?
The, the single sentence that's been added to section two D eight A to remove that additional sentence for now, keeping the other changes that are promoted in this policy.
We'll take that as official motion.
I'll second for a discussion.
A motion to amend to remove that section or that sentence from AA, open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I like the flexibility of the, of the policy. I do think to Mr. Schultz's point, I mean, the, you know, I do think we want to be accommodating as we can be, and it's difficult to define every specific circumstance. I mean, you could have somebody who say, you know, this person raised me, and I don't have a biological or any other legal connection to them, but they're family. And I think we can need to trust that the people that are, the employees of the city will ask only when they think it's appropriate and understanding given the circumstances. And I think we can trust the city administrator to assess those circumstances, and we can avoid any abuse of the policy, although I wouldn't foresee it when you consider the circumstances that it's looking to address. So I think it's fine as is.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other thoughts, discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I do, to an extent, understand where Councilmember Gannfield's coming from. I think, thinking about my leave of absence policy, I do think it's maybe a little more rigid or defined as to who those members are. I guess, Bailey, you'd be the content expert here as our HR person. Does this give you heartburn that it's loose? Do we feel like we're leaving ourselves open in some way for a grievance? What, I mean, I think in some respects it puts administrator gains in the somewhat thankless position too, because that's the final approving body there because it's not defined. Just curious your thoughts.
I think the inclusion of this actually helps us because we have had quite a few situations where there are people are looking in the handbook policy for, I have this relationship, how is it handled? And this, this relationship to them is very important, and it's not in our policy right now to allow for that, so we have had to turn people down. Like, I'm sorry, this isn't covered under bereavement. So it's just an extra thing that we thought we could do to help accommodate employees in this situation, so we thought the ad was beneficial.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, do we see this language in other cities uniformly used, or how do we come up with this?
I don't, I did not look at other cities' bereavement policy for that specific answer. Sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion from council? All right, any from the public? So for the amended portion of removing that sentence. All right, seeing none requires, do require a roll call vote on these items in here?
The amended isn't-
For the amendment.
Voice vote on the amendment.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment of removing the sentence from that item?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion does not carry. Go back to the original motion for item number twenty-three, to approve the resolution approving and adopting amendments to CFD twenty-three fifty-four, personnel policy leaves of absence. Any additional conversation from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. And we'll go to item number twenty-four, resolution approving and adopting amendments to CFD twenty-four oh six, personnel policy, technology, resources, acceptable use. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on this item, section three A, the wording is, I think it's lacking just a couple of words there, so I'd like to see us make that change, whether that's tonight or in the future. It simply says, "Use of city computing resources for purposes other than those intended by the city department granting access to these resources includes but is not limited to." We're defining use of computing resources, and then we go on to talk about what all is disallowed simply because it falls under the misconduct heading. I just want that to be reworded. To the point of the changes tonight, section three A, subsection three, needs reworded. I think, in my opinion, I am open to being corrected, but it says, "Transmission, retrieval, or storage of communications or other materials of a political belief, discriminatory or harassing nature with derogatory or inflammatory remarks regarding race, et cetera." It doesn't really define what's outlawed, in my opinion. So are the political beliefs on our computers what's outlawed here now? Or is there a protection against discriminating against someone or a particular political belief?
Turner Rogers?
From a latter section to the earlier section, and it seems like it's now saying you can't transmit any political beliefs on computer, on city resources or other types of outlawed discriminatory practices.
Turner, Turner Rogers, if I can, jump in, Dustin. Turner Rogers or Bailey, can you just explain what was the rationale for that specific inclusion?
My policy, so. I think you should ask the, the policy expert.
I'm sorry, I forgot we're in technology policy. Thank you, Julie.
By the way, I'm the last person to ask about technology.
Rosemary's got you covered.
You know, I probably took this from another city's wording, you know, probably where it came from. I probably did three or four different cities and tried to grab them together and took bits and pieces from them.
Can you speak just-
Mayor, I was just going to suggest, I mean, there's no urgency in this policy. If there's some things that, you know, Mr. Gannfield would like to send us or clarify, or we can take the time to look or compare to other cities. I mean, we can sure pull it tonight and do that if you'd like to, just to spend a little more time looking through it and know our examples.
That probably wouldn't be a terrible idea. There's, there's probably other sections, though. I mean, we, I just found in code, we're not allowing people to walk across streets with a white cane unless they're blind. I mean, there's some, there's some code that needs to be cleared up, but, I mean, to that point, I think just the movement of that political belief piece in there was the only one that gave me heartburn on this one.
Okay.
But if we want to pull it and rework both of those sections.
Well, I just thought if you had specifics, instead of us trying to guess there, come up, you know, why we saw the example, we can sure do that.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion to that effect, just to, to table it, or?
Let's make, I'll make a motion to table item twenty-four for further clarification.
So we'd have to postpone to a specific time in the future, and it would still be the first reading, so.
And this one's just a resolution.
It's a resolution, sorry.
And tabling it isn't the, the worst idea so long as we bring it back off the table within sixty days, but let's, uh-
Tablings, tabling is, can get real tricky. We could accidentally kill things.
Yeah. I would rather just-
Postpone it to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, and we could-
I amend my motion to postpone to the next meeting, item number twenty-four.
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion on the amendment to, or the tabling of it to the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, what are we trying to accomplish here? We're trying to clarify what or?
I was going to ask-
What is the point of, like, clarify what we're trying to get to, I guess?
Yep.
Well, I think that's Jen's request, is that we would clarify what it would be preferred. Now, what I'm avoiding to clarify that is, right now, it says, the current policy says, "Transmission, this is under misconduct with our computer devices. Transmission, retrieval, or storage of communications or other materials of a discriminatory or harassing nature." And it continues to qualify what is outlawed. It now is proposed to change to, "Retrieval or storage of communications or other materials of a political nature, a political belief, discriminatory or harassing nature with derogatory or inflammatory remarks." I don't think it's clear on what we're trying to outlaw.
Is that what you were going to ask, too?
I think it is clear.
Clarifications on, or do you have something to go and add in there?
Mr. Mayor, my only concern is the time. We're asking for it to be next meeting, but if we're going to have to do a little bit of research, we have to have everything in by Friday for the next council meeting, so if we had a little bit longer, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I could amend my motion to May nineteenth meeting?
I take that as a friendly amendment to move that date. I think that's a friendly amendment, to move that date. So we have a amended, or a motion to table this to the May.
May 19th meeting?
Postpone.
Delay.
Postpone to that meeting with the direction to staff to just come back with, sounds like some clarification on what is the intent with that, the change, and kind of the outcome of what that's actually accomplishing with the change.
And if you had others you were going to get?
And to be clear, on the earlier portion, just the three A in general, that heading isn't a complete sentence that tells us that it's actually misconduct. So outlawed use of city computing resources would include.
We have a second for my friendly amendment?
It was friendly, so under my second.
Any discussion on motion to postpone? Any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
That motion does carry, so we then have, well, I guess this is, we'll do a roll call, so we've amended this to be the, to table it. Do we need to, Turner Rogers, this is a roll call for this item for the actual vote? Or can we just voice vote to table it?
Voice vote.
Okay. All right, so that's been to delay, excuse me, to delay this. So this item's been delayed to the May, second meeting in May. All right, with no further items on there, we'll move to the ordinances. Item number 38, passing ordinance amending chapter 20 subdivisions of the Code of Ordinances to update and establish definitions and regulations related to street connectivity upon its first consideration, to a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded, and I believe we've got some staff comments from Karen. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, just to go over the second part of this project, statement of the problem, this was outlined in the staff memo. But we have a lack of clear and objective standards in our subdivision code regarding street connectivity. And this has resulted, and I think I gave a lot of examples at the committee of the whole meeting, different parts of the city where this has resulted in, in some long-term cost to the community. Some of these are uneven distribution of traffic, overburdening certain streets with excess traffic, impacting property owners along those routes. An example would be like Eric Road, for example, we've heard a lot of complaints about. Reduced access to important destinations such as school, shopping, and employment. Longer travel times for area residents, longer routes and reduced safety, discouraging walking and biking. Increased emergency response times, inefficient routing of utilities and services such as refuse pickup and snow plowing. It also has created, as Mr. Schultz pointed out, there's barriers to new development, and it slows the growth of the community when we don't have enough street connections. There's a need for clearance, clear standards also to ensure fair, consistent, and streamlined reviews for new development, which also is money in the pocket of our developers. We have, as, you know, one of the evidence of, of some of these issues, we have many complaints received about traffic congestion, speeding, and lack of direct safe routes to school can be traced back to a lack of adequately connected street network. Concern about traffic congestion safety is one of the top reasons cited by the public for opposing new development and growth of the city. So that's kind of the evidence that we looked at, kind of looked at what other communities are doing. And here you can see, there's a chart, we looked at, a number of cities have, have gone to adopting some connectivity standards, some basic standards in their subdivision code, so that developers have some basic ground rules to go by. And you can see here, most adopted a 600-foot spacing. That's consistent with the SUDAS standard, the statewide standard for intersection spacing, spacing for local streets. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some discussion about, we had initially proposed 600 feet to be consistent with that, but we had some discussion, and an individual came to the meeting and, and had some concerns. And so the commission did adjust that to, to be a little more flexible, to range up to 800 feet for our block lengths. Similarly, for the perimeter block length, we also went up corresponding to that 800-foot range in response to some concerns expressed about the length of the blocks. The maximum cul-de-sac length, that's in our existing code, we're not proposing to change that. That's consistent with the number of other communities, and it's consistent with our FIRE code. The right-of-way width for local streets, and this is Mr. Cruz's discussion here, you can see what other communities are requiring for right-of-way width for our local streets. This would be consistent then with our, with our, both our collector streets and local streets would be at 66 feet wide for consistency and for all the things that we try to fit into our right-of-way. So again, here are the standards that we've chosen, and I just went through a number of those, so I won't go through the ones that we've already talked about. But I will emphasize the block length, the 200 to 800 feet, with the majority of the blocks in the 300 to 600-foot range allows a lot of flexibility for the developers, but aligns with our FIRE code and is consistent with the SUDAS standard for local street intersection spacing, which is 300 to 600 feet, and matches our current maximum cul-de-sac length. The street stub to the property boundary is something that we highlighted at the last, at the committee of the whole meeting, and how that's created some real problems for expansion of our city and the ability for the next developer to pick up those streets and be able to efficiently connect the streets and to develop property. And we've got another cases right now where people are struggling, they have a piece of ground, they can't develop it because there weren't any streets stubbed to those properties. Now, we did build a lot of flexibility into the ordinance for a lot of different situations because we know that every piece of ground is different. So there's flexibility for natural barriers, and I'll go through some of those details in a moment. Also, for through-block sidewalks where we can't connect the streets, sometimes it's nice to have a pedestrian route so the bicyclists and the pedestrians can still get through there, like the end of a cul-de-sac bulb or a connection over to a trail. And then, of course, our collector street intersection spacing, which we talked about with the major thoroughfare plan being quarter-mile. So I wanted to emphasize, too, that we did provide a lot of flexibility. We know that every piece of ground is different. So where there's natural barriers such as stream corridors, floodplains, and ravines that prevent a connection, of course, you know, we'd allow cul-de-sac in those situations. Where existing development prevents a connection, we have a lot of disconnected neighborhoods right now, so we know that we're going to have to catch up with some of these, and there won't be the ability to connect the street in certain situations. For large lot development, where there would be less than five residential lots per block, for efficiency's sake, we'd say, look at some of those for our industrial parks, business parks, agricultural districts, some longer blocks would make some sense. Along our tier of streets, where we want to control our intersections and where those street connections are limited, those are the places we'd want to look at, having some cul-de-sacs or some double-fronting lots, that sort of thing to accommodate those. Along our limited-access highways, where, of course, we're controlling those intersections. And to accommodate large neighborhood facilities and institutions such as schools and parks, we're going to have some long frontages along some of our bigger parks. Obviously, that's something we, we want to have in our community, so we would make accommodation for those types of things. There are, there's several other things in this ordinance. We've, again, updated the definitions to be consistent with what we did in chapter 19, the major thoroughfare plan, updated our right-of-way widths. Reduced, actually, the right-of-way width for collector streets from 80 to 66 feet, and then increased the right-of-way width for local streets from 60 to 66 feet for adequate space for utilities, street trees, snow storage, et cetera. And added a requirement for temporary construction roads if it's needed to reduce the impact to the surrounding neighborhood during construction of a subdivision. And then we tried to generally eliminate vague language related to all our ordinances, and there's some vague language in a couple of sections of our code related to cul-de-sacs in private streets. So at the meeting on February 26, on a vote of seven, one, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the amendments to chapter 20 subdivisions. And the Bike and Pet, Pet Commission also recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, open the council questions.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, for that explanation. On the through sidewalk going between two residential homes, who's responsible for snow removal on that?
So that would really be up for the, the homeowners association, probably, but it's however the developer wants to have that designated. They could make it an outlaw and have a homeowners association do it, or they could designate it to be.
Adjacent property owner.
Property owners, so.
That would be joyful for that person.
Right. I think generally, I think we think it's good practice to make an outlaw and have the homeowners association take care of it.
Okay. The through sidewalk, I appreciate that, I like that idea. I think of Quail Ridge with a very lengthy couple of streets there. I've never heard anybody complain about access. I think there's situations that the length of the block, in this case, 2,000 feet, is very dual and usable and workable. I'd like to see some flexibility, I know you say it's flexible, but yet limited to the 2,200 feet around a block, correct?
So the exceptions are there if somebody can't meet the 2,200.
Sure.
That's where we would look at, so some of those situations. We could exceed the 2,200 if, if certain situations are.
Around the block. But in Quail Ridge, you have a 2,000-foot length section. I can't really read the street names, but pretty lengthy, but a very workable neighborhood. And I know, and I've said this before, when I fly in and out of airports, I now look down at the subdivisions in the neighborhoods. And Charlotte, North Carolina, big, long streets, curving cul-de-sacs and everything. I mean, I believe they got snow there, I mean, snow piling up. I, I think we're, as some people have said, we're taking up too much land for concrete and making it more costly to develop. There should be some more give and take to possibly apply for a Quail Ridge scenario to have long blocks. There's access ingress, egress for emergency vehicles easily at both ends of it. It would be nice to have greater flexibility on that 2,200 number. I don't know how we could incorporate that, but we're just driving up the cost of developing a neighborhood. And I get the point of accessibility, but you can accommodate that in other ways.
Thank you, counselor. Any other conversation, questions? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor? I just want to double check, I think there was just a typographical error, where we missed one on section 20 dash two definitions, where local streets are defined, and at least 60 feet in width is defined there. But in section 20, 136, we changed it to 66. So I just want to make sure that scribner's error is adjusted.
Oh, yes, it is. That is a scribner's error there, yep.
Thank you, counselor.
So that amendment technically, or just safe with the scribner's error? We know the intent is to change it to 66, so we missed one spot.
Now that we're actually on ordinance, I'll talk about ordinance, unlike the last comment. Let's treat it as a scribner's error, that way we don't have to worry about starting over. We understand, it, it was an oversight.
Cool.
Any other questions, conversation, thoughts from counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Is that cool?
Ms. Howard, can you pull up the grid that you had with the different city comparisons?
Sure.
For me? So the maximum perimeter block length is the item that we seem to use, give me heartburn analogy. Four of the cities have none. We are granted going higher than the other two that do have it. But I don't know that we should have a max perimeter because it gives us more flexibility if we cover some of the other things there. It's a way to allow more lots, because on Quail Ridge, if you put that 2,200 number in there, they would have lost at least six, if not eight, homes in that subdivision.
Yeah, I can speak to that example, specific example. But the perimeter is really there to provide sort of a belts and suspenders to the block length, because we have some blocks that are irregular in shape, and we have curvilinear blocks. So it's a way to understand what, how you, you know, because some blocks may have more than four sides. So, so it's a way for everybody to understand kind of how you measure all those intersections. So it's really, goes together with the block length standard, and we think it's an easier way to, for people to understand those things.
Well, to my point, many of the cities didn't have it. So I don't understand why we're strapping the developer and forcing him into doing something. I'd make a motion to remove the 2,200 proposed maximum perimeter block length. Because that, it's not a prevalent thing to have, and we could go into other cities. Like I said earlier, looking out over other communities, when you fly into other states, they definitely don't limit them to 2,200 feet. And we're just forcing more concrete, more cross streets.
And what I would say for this is, just so everyone knows kind of the process, one, we wouldn't really make a motion to change, this has to go through P and Z, so any changes to it means just turning it down and sending it back with input for what we want to see changed in it. So I would say the staff's point, this was the recommendation based on the research, the input, public comment, a lot of process they went into this, so we can certainly discuss if, I mean, if you don't like it, we can vote it down and give direction, but this was the recommendation based on a lot of work to come to this point and kind of up to us to decide if this meets what we want or if we want to give direction to make changes.
That's another set of eyes looking on this, Danny, and it's, you just kind of.
Oh, sorry, she was, when that we, so we do still need a second on it? Okay, so I guess we didn't get a second on the motion, or at least didn't get it recorded?
His motion, yeah.
Oh, so.
His amendment.
Oh, so you're making the amendment to, are you proposing the amendment?
Motion to amend to not have a 2,200 max perimeter dimension by virtue of the other cities' majority not having it.
Just clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, Turner Rogers, we can't amend this. We would have to deny this, and then with direction for changes, because this has to go back through P and Z.
I'm not sure about the P and Z part of it. I, I know that the major thoroughfare plan must be approved by P and Z because our ordinance says so. Unless they came as a package and P and Z just ruled on it, I'm not sure that P and Z specifically has to rule on a change to chapter 20. So for that reason, I think counsel's free to amend and adopt as amended, if it wishes, without it going back to P and Z.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So a motion to amend to remove the 2,200 max block length?
Perimeter block length.
Was there a second to that motion? Not seeing a second. We'll go back to the original discussion and approval of the item that's on the agenda. Any other discussion for that? Seeing none, we'll move to any discussion input from the public. Just name the address, please.
Kam Yar and Cheyan, 1703 Washington Street. I'm here to support this ordinance. I've seen it over the last 35 years or so. All the reasons that Karen explained, there's a lot of examples that could be corrected if we adopt this. Connectivity, discouraging cul-de-sac walkways, really incredible. I'm really impressed with the changes, I've reviewed it very carefully. Things that I think about, cost savings, right? All, all, again, you mentioned, Karen mentioned the cost savings in terms of materials, dead ends that, you know, for waterways. But one thing I keep thinking about, on Washington Street where I live, if emergency responders need to come to my place, they can come to me in four, from four different directions. But if you live in, say, Winding Ridge, another example of a place that doesn't have a, any connection to anywhere, nobody can connect to it, you see? That's really important. I think, I think this, in the long run, this ordinance is going to really help us cut costs. So I really appreciate your support for it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheyan. Any other public comment for this item tonight? Just name, please.
Yes, Roger White from the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Again, we endorsed these changes with, with no negative vote, and so I want to convey that. I, I know. and so I want to convey that, I know Ms. Howard alluded to that, but I just wanted to support that, I guess. Also, one of our members, Jack Yates, is co, is Vice Chair of the Commission and is in Louisiana right now where his son and family live. So he's not able to be here, but he did submit a written response. Is it possible that someone could, from the council, could read that into the record?
If you've got some time now, if you'd like to.
Would you give me more than, because I wanted to make a pitch myself in addition to his statement. I mean, if I get forbearance, in case I run out of time, I'll do it.
Okay, have an extra few minutes to, yep.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
To the Cedar Falls City Council, I write to you as a member of the Cedar Falls Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. I think we can all agree that being able to walk and bike in Cedar Falls greatly adds to the quality of life in the city, and our public expenditures demonstrate the importance of it. We spend money, both public and private, to make sure sidewalks and trails are available and in good repair. We show with our expenditures that we consider walking and biking a, quote, "public good," end quote, something highly desirable for everyone. Now, consider that in a city with connected streets, walking or biking to a destination becomes much more feasible. Travel distance actually become shorter, making trips on foot or bike more feasible. Bikers and walkers are, of course, highly sensitive to distances when deciding whether to do the trip walking or biking or going by car. Using maps of our city, one of the city planners showed the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission many examples of neighborhoods that were effectively cut off from the rest of the city so that getting to a destination by car on foot or on bike requires much more travel than it would in a connected city. This is a daily annoyance for the drivers when their travel distance may be doubled, when it would be necessary, what it would be necessary, but that doubling of distance can be even more discouraging for walkers and bikers. Having a connected city is important for all of us, it is an important aspect of daily quality of life that often isn't recognized, but nevertheless is very important. Respectfully yours, Jack Yates, a member and Vice Chair of Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Commission.
Thank you, Mr. White, that's your time.
Thank you, Gail. I, I want to echo the value of having connected streets, and at the risk of reading something that you've already seen, the advantages of having connected streets are ensuring multiple routes to neighborhood destinations such as schools, parks, shopping areas, et cetera. Reducing walking and biking distances, improving safety and comfort for walkers and bicyclists, reducing commute times and driver frustration and possibly speeding, lowering emergency response times and distances, provides efficient routes for utilities and for services such as refuse pickup and snow plowing, reduces traffic congestion in neighborhoods and along major streets by distributing traffic more evenly throughout the street network, ensuring that a budding land, and this is an important one, ensuring that a budding land can be developed. This is the street stubs that are required, which if you don't put them in there, you'll landlock a piece of ground. Ensuring that, oh, excuse me, I've read that already. And providing clear standards to ensure fair and consistent reviews for new development. And I think that's also very important to have standards that will be used in future development. So for all of those reasons, I strongly support sidewalk and trail connectivity. It facilitates access and greater, more convenient use. It's an equality issue, although I know that's not in vogue now to talk about equality, but it still is important. Connectivity allows citizens to get to important destinations like schools, daycare, churches, parks, shopping areas, medical facilities, et cetera. Lack of connectivity discourages use, and we need to be encouraging greater use of our sidewalks and our trails for both health, wellness reasons, and for efficient transportation by alternate environmentally friendly means. So if we have these, these more flexible standards or these more flexible approaches in addition to the standards, and we have a situation where you can't avoid a longer block, then we strongly encourage the pass-through that has been spoken of earlier, that will alleviate some of the concern of a long block by having the pass-through. And I have some experience with it, my daughter and her family live in University City, which is part of the Greater St. Louis area, and they live on some very long blocks, and they have these pass-throughs that run through the neighborhood. In fact, there's one right across from their driveway that goes, well, three blocks over, and when I'm down there, I use them for walking a lot. Otherwise, it would be a long trek just around that one block. And so if you got a situation where you can't get down to 2,200 feet, and there's an exception in the, in the ordinance, then the pass-through is kind of a fallback or a second option. Lastly, our Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Commission is responsible for our bicycle-friendly status through the American, League of American Bicyclists. And our bronze, which is the lowest level, will be coming up for renewal in 2027, and city policies that encourage more and safer use of bicycles for transportation and recreation will help Cedar Falls obtain renewal and possibly advance beyond the current bronze level in 2027, and I thank you for the forbearance.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, come back, any further discussion from counsel?
Mr. Mayor. Question for Ms. Howard, the 2,200 primer block length, will a pass-through sidewalk then help satisfy the 2,200 maximum block dimension?
No, but it's an option where an exception is warranted.
Well, the language in, proposed language for subdivision code Chapter 20 doesn't specify that it has to be a vehicular crossover. Why, that should be clarified.
So we're talking about street connectivity, so the definitions and that's laid out in the code would, would clarify that. So the through-block, the through-block sidewalk is, is only mentioned as an option when the block is too long.
I don't, I don't see any reference to a vehicular cross, like it has to be a street.
So this is about streets, public streets itself, so when you're laying out a subdivision, it's talking about the block length for a street, so.
Okay. I don't see the clarity there, but.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any other discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, that motion carries. We'll now move to allow bills and claims, we have a motion to allow bills and claims for April 21st.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? And any from the public? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, any council updates or announcements? All right, seeing none, any council referrals? Also seeing none, I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.